I call this meeting to order. This is the annual public hearing for the World's Best Workforce Plan for the Northfield Public School District. Today is Monday, November 27, 2017, and the time is 6:30 PM. Following the presentation of the 2016-17 World's Best Workforce Plan and the plans for the upcoming school year by the District Director of Teaching and Learning, Mary Grace Hansen, and the District Assessment Coordinator, Hope Langston, there will be an opportunity for community feedback. And just as a reminder to board members, this is an opportunity for the residents of the Northfield School District to provide feedback to the district. As board members, we will have the opportunity to ask questions and provide comments during tonight's regular school board meeting following the public hearing. So, thank you, Mary Grace and Hope, for presenting this evening.
Well, thank you for letting us have this opportunity to present our World's Best Workforce Report for the Northfield Public School District. This was presented last Monday night to the Northfield Forward Committee, and we received some excellent feedback from them, so you will see the new and improved version of our report. The World's Best Workforce is mandated by the Minnesota State Legislature. The mandate requires a report from each school district on five specific goal areas: all children ready for school, all students reading at grade level by the end of third grade, closing the achievement gap between all student groups, all students career in college ready, and all students graduate from high school. And this legislation came about because of several factors. The Minnesota population is aging and reaching retirement. In 2018, 70% of the jobs in Minnesota will require more than a high school diploma. We have a lack in the qualified workforce, and the largest segment of our population is students of color, and that student group has the lowest high school graduation rate. And, as you probably have seen in the news reports, Minnesota has one of the worst achievement gaps in the country. So, let's begin the World's Best Workforce Report. The first goal is all children ready for school. Our goal was 80% or more of incoming kindergarten students will be academically and behaviorally ready for school in the fall of 2017. And here are the data and the results.
Good evening, everyone. So, for our first goal, you may recall that we are members of the Kindergarten Entry Pilot through MDE, which allows us the use of the FAST Assessment, free of charge. The FAST Assessment measures early reading and math readiness. And as you can see, 84% of our kindergarteners were ready in reading, 81% in math, meaning they were designated low risk or some risk in the fall of 2017. Additionally, 89% of the class of 2030 were socially and emotionally ready for kindergarten. I do want to point out that for the past two years, we have used the SABERS Behavioral Assessment. That was part of the KEPP Profile of Assessments in the first year, 2015. They then dropped it from the pilot in the second year, but we went ahead and gave it anyways. And then, this year, with the adoption of the new SEL curriculum, we did not want to add another assessment to our kindergarten teachers, so we used the developmental milestones, which is required under the kindergarten pilot, and used the social-emotional domain of that assessment. And that is where that 89% comes from. So, I will be totally transparent in saying we are still really looking for the best assessment measure to use for the social-emotional piece of this readiness. And, again, it's a work in progress. I met with the pals last Wednesday at the three elementary schools to discuss this further, but it's something that we continue to work on. So, here you have the readiness results disaggregated by student group, and the black line would be that 80% mark. And you can see the bottom two colored bars, the gold and the maroon, would be the low-risk and the some-risk students in reading for this fall. So, we did reach that 80% mark if we include both low-risk and some-risk. And then, you can see that as we disaggregate, the achievement gap is there even as we enter in our incoming kindergarteners. Math readiness, the same thing. Again, the achievement gap is evident, but we did hit that 80% goal for low- and some-risk Here are the trends now that we have used the FAST Assessment for three years. You will see this year that we did have a drop in the percentage of kindergarteners who were low-risk. We also had a drop in the high-risk, so they all ended up in the middle into some-risk. Again, this can vary by cohort, and we certainly are seeing that. The math, we did change the math and reading assessment timeline, and that math is done on Ready, Set, Go Day, but reading is done within the first few weeks of school. I do want to point out also that we have been tracking the cohorts as they use the FAST and as they move on towards first grade. So, now we have two years of kindergarteners, and we wanted to look at what happens to the high-risk and some-risk students as they move into first grade and use the MAP Assessment. We're tracking it closely because, again, the FAST Assessment, which is a relatively new assessment, and the company has experienced tremendous growth, we look a little bit different in their norming pool, and we want to kind of see where should our threshold be? Should it be high, some-risk, should it be low-risk? I will tell you that for the cohorts of 15 and 16, about 30% of those kids went on to test at grade level in first grade of the high-risk kids. So, we moved a significant portion of those kids. For the some-risk students, about 55% of those kids went on to score at grade level on their first-grade MAP. And in math, it was about 33% of our high-risk students went on to test at grade level in first grade. And in math, it was about 56%. So, that is a sizable percentage of our students that are at some and high risk that are going on to reach grade level in first grade.
So, our goals for next year state that the 2018 incoming kindergarten students will demonstrate an increase of low-risk, which means demonstrating readiness for kindergarten; in reading, we will move it from 49% to 75%,; in math, from 56% to 75%, and in social-emotional skills, from 89% to 95%. Goal two states that all third graders can read at grade level. So, our goal states that 80% of third graders will meet or exceed grade-level standards on the 2017 Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment. The Minnesota Department of Education had set target goals for all school districts, so this 80% wasn't just pulled from the air. This was what we would have had to achieve in order to meet the guidelines set forth by the Minnesota Department of Education. So, the data and the results from Goal Two.
So, third-grade reading, we had a decline for the fourth straight year since the standards changed, and 56.9% of our third graders met grade-level standard on the MCA. I will say that I did go through the entire state file for World's Best Workforce, and of the 385 districts that test 10 or more students in reading, 11 met their MDE target for 2017. That's 3% of all districts in the state. So, we were not alone in meeting our target and not meeting our target. As a district, here is what those reading results look like for our student groups. The red line would be our state average; the gold bar would be where Northfield performed. I do also want to point out that our free and reduced lunch population, who are also EL students, does exceed the state average for that same demographic. So, approximately 35% of our FRPs are also EL, and that, at the state level, is 26%. And as you can imagine, at Greenville, that number's a lot higher. So, I do think that plays in to these results because, obviously, the FRP Hispanic and English learner bars have a lot of overlap in kids. So, if we're not making it in one, it would be highly unlikely that we'd make it in another. This is a snapshot of the trends. Over time, and again, recall that the standards for reading changed in 2013, and you can see we are fairly flat or declining across those five years. I think it is really important to give our proficiency rate some state context. In other words, where do we fall in all of the districts in the state that are testing third graders? So, as a district, 51% of the districts across the state had proficiency rates at or above Northfields, and then you can see the breakdown by school. I do want to point out some other just interesting context for some of our school demographics. 52% of Greenville Park's third graders were FRP and EL designated. Greenville Park also had a significant jump in its FRP population in this third-grade cohort, from '16 to '17. These next three slides represent the peer schools for each of our elementary schools. And a study was done over the course of last year, over two semesters, two terms, actually, at Carlton, to identify demographically similar peers for each of our elementary schools. We think that this is really important because each of our schools really looks very different demographically, and it is not fair to compare them to schools that do not look like them demographically. So, the Carlton team worked first term on identifying a set of peer schools based on the 2016 data, and then they did it longitudinally so that we would see a more stable set over five years. So, each of our schools has five peers that are demographically similar, although I will say that is very hard to match Greenville's. And so, when I pull up each of those schools individually, you still see some variation. Bridgewater and Sibley's are pretty close, so that would indicate that they can find peers that look like them across the state. But this, you can see, is the proficiency level of our district school, elementary school, compared to the demographic peers. This is Greenville's. And this is Sibley's demographic peer set.
Our goal for this State Department goal is that in 2018, the percentage of increase of proficient third-grade readers will go to 70% on the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments. Goal three is all racial and economic achievement gaps between students are closed. And our goal in Northfield was that we will exceed the state reading and math averages for on-track students in the Hispanic, free and reduced lunch prices, and English language learners, and special education student groups 100% of the time on the 2017 Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments. On-track means that we would move non-proficient readers, or math students would have high growth, and those who test proficient would have medium or high growth, as measured by the State Department.
There is a win in here, in all these words. So, that on-track goal, really, when we were looking at goals last year, we knew that our gaps continued to plague us, right? We stand up every year and we say, "We have a gap for our FRP and our Hispanic and our And we knew that growth is what's ultimately going to get us to closing that gap. We need high growth from our student groups, and preferably, growth on both sides of the gap, right? We don't want the top line dropping and the bottom line increasing. So, this on-track average, we knew that if we could get these kids to have high growth, that eventually, we will close that gap. We did exceed the state average for both FRP and SPED in both reading and math. Hispanic, we did actually have above-average results this year for math for the first time. So, that was fantastic. EL, we continue to struggle to exceed that state average. So, this is a table of the percentage of students in each of these student groups who is meeting that on-track criteria of high growth if they are non-proficient, or medium or high growth if they are proficient, versus the state average. And I'm glad you guys all got this last week because it's a lot to take in in one evening. This just gives you a picture of the actual size of our gaps between student groups compared to the state average. So, this is not proficiency rate. This is the difference in proficiency rate between the non-challenged group and their challenged counterpart. So, the size of the gap is that difference in proficiency levels between the two groups listed, as compared to the state average. These are our gap trends. And I do want to say, this is a district-wide look at our achievement gap, but I will say that we had some pretty significant wins this year, that, again, do not show up in this district line. But at the middle school in particular, we saw declines in the non-FRP-FRP gap, and that occurred even with both of those groups increasing their proficiency levels, which is fantastic because it means that FRP accelerated their proficiency to be able to close that gap, beyond what their non-challenged peers were doing. We also saw in math, a 6% drop in the Hispanic and white gap at the middle school. We saw an almost nonexistent gap in FRP at Bridgewater 4th grade in reading and math. We saw FRP proficiency rates rise for every single grade at the middle school in every single subject, except for one instance. Other than that, in 2017, they saw an increase in their FRP pass rates across all grade levels and content areas, which was really impressive. Math gaps sort of mirror the reading, again, with EL and non-EL being our largest gap. And again, trends, that top line being the increase in the gap, again, not a good thing here of our EL, non-EL. So, the gap number is one you do not want to grow. You want it to actually get smaller.
So, our goal, Northfield School District, by the spring of 2018, the free and reduced price lunch gap will be at least 3% less than the state average on the 2018 Reading and Math Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments, and the Hispanic and English language learner student gaps will be smaller than the state average on the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments.
I'm going to add one thing.
Okay.
One of the reasons why we did change the way this goal is written is because, under ESSA, the growth model is going to change. We will get Z scores, but we are not going to get the growth buckets that we're typically, we've seen in the past, all the years since I've been here anyways. They are going to go to a proficiency matrix. I'm not going to go into it now because it's a little more complicated, but just know that is why we changed the format of these growth goals, back to the gap between the state average and our actual results because of that change in the MDE calculation of growth.
Right. So, we will not have that on-track thing next year. So, this year, we have several action steps that are actually very robust and a major change from previous years to help us achieve the first three goals of the World's Best Workforce. And while we are implementing some of these new changes, we will obviously continue to do the high-quality work and programs we already have in place. We're just not highlighting those here for you this evening. So, the excellent work that's happening in our schools will continue, and we will add some of these things. The Mother Goose curriculum is being offered to private in-home daycare centers, and 22 of 29 of those daycare centers are implementing the Mother Goose curriculum. So, thank you to Community Services and HCI for helping with that. We are in the first year of full implementation of Second Step, a social-emotional curriculum from Early Ventures, Hand-in-Hand, and Grades K-8. So, that's a pre-K-8 initiative. And in the areas of literacy instruction, grades 1-7 are using computerized instructional systems to provide both remediation and acceleration. And the district literacy team has been meeting for a year now and has chosen collaborative classroom for the new literacy curriculum resource. And we're spending a lot of time this year in professional development to learn this curriculum before full implementation next fall. And as part of STRIVE, we have the Move Five Initiative in 3rd grade, which began in October. And this initiative, in cooperation with Red Wing Public Schools and Northfield Promise, is concentrating on moving five 3rd graders in each classroom to the proficient level on the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments. The professional learning activities are concentrating on literacy at the elementary level this year. On November 22, Bridgewater and Greenville Park teachers spent the day learning about class-wide interventions in the area of literacy with trainers from the University of Minnesota. Sibley teachers, who had the same training last year, spent the day learning about guided reading groups. And the pre-K teachers spent the day learning how to interpret and use the data to provide better instruction for their students. Many of the professional learning communities at the elementary and secondary levels have goals relating to literacy and math, which will impact the goals we just talked about. And you've already heard some of the success stories, and Hope highlighted some of the works that some of the other PLCs, professional learning communities, are doing. So, we will continue our collaboration with Northfield Promise, and we are grateful to their support and interest from the entire community for help for all our students from cradle to career. Goal four is all students are ready for career in college. And while the Minnesota Department of Education is using only the results of 8th-grade Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment in math to determine career in college readiness, we have three parts to our goal to determine that readiness. So, Part One is 80% of Northfield 8th graders will be proficient on the 2017 Reading and Math Minnesota Comprehensive Assessments.
Again, that goal came from the targets, the ambitious targets set by MDE for 2017. So, this year, Grade 8, we had a proficiency rate of 66% in reading; in math, 71%, which reversed a four-year decline. It was very exciting. They exceeded, in reading, every demographic group exceeded the state average, for the first time, actually, in a number of years. So, that was also exciting to see. So, while you can see the all-student group and the white student group relatively flat since the standards changed, you're going to see down below that our demographic groups, student groups, had some nice increases this year in reading. So, I want you to think about that 66% again, because we hear 66%, and we think there's a lot of room for improvement. But 66% in 8th grade puts you at only 24% of districts with a proficiency rate at or above ours. So, 66% is pretty impressive for an 8th grade pass rate. The middle school also has five peers that were identified in the Carlton study, and as you can see, the middle school performed quite well in their peer group. Math, they made some changes. I started working with them in the summer before the school year started, and that team is just incredible to work with and really was looking to make an impact on what they were doing for kids. And as you can see, they also, in math, exceeded the state average in every student group. And there you can see the nice increases in every single student group for 8th grade An equally great placement in the state. And in their peer group of demographically similar schools. These teachers work incredibly hard to get these results, and it's nice to see it play out for them.
Part Two of our goal, Northfield School District, will increase the percentage of 11th graders reaching college-ready composite benchmark by 6% to 68% in 2017 on the ACT.
So, 63% of our 11th graders met the college-ready benchmark composite score on the ACT last Now, there's two sets of data here for the ACT. These would be the junior test takers, so the state testing day, 63% were ready, and another 14% were within two points of being ready. I think the interesting thing here is, and when we talk about, and we've seen it play out in a number of different grade levels in the district, is gradual improvement or gradual decline can add up over the years. And here we have gradual improvement. The not-college-ready has dropped 5% over the past three years, which is a good number of kids. So, I think these are promising results, and, again, we look to move that needle as much as we can every single year, but over time, you know, we want to see the winds add up. The second set of data would be our district college readiness report. So, that comes out in the summer following the graduation of a cohort. So, this is the ACT readiness report for last year's seniors. As you can see, that cohort of students continued to outperform both the state and the nation. And similarly, for the percentage of students who are testing college-ready by subtest, we continue to outperform the state and the nation.
Our third part of the goal was 87% or more of Northfield students will score 3 or higher on advanced placement exams.
We nailed this goal again. So, we had 218 students taking AP tests last year. 356 AP exams were taken, which is just incredible, and there were 70 AP scholars. And there were 70 AP scholars in that class. So really great results, again, far exceeding the state and global AP results.
So our goal for 2017-18, by the spring of 2018, we will increase the percentage of 8th graders who score proficient on the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment in reading to 70% and to 75% in math. And we will increase the percentage of 11th graders who meet the college-ready benchmark composite score to 68% on the ACT. The fifth goal is all students graduate from high school. And our goal was, we will maintain or exceed a 95% graduation rate.
So the 2016 cohort graduation rate was 91% for Northfield School District students and 94% at Northfield High School. This one bears a little more explanation. The, the graduation data is always a year delayed. So while it seems silly to be setting a goal for the class of 2017 who actually already graduated, we don't get the data until February following their graduation year. So for World's Best Workforce, the graduation rates are always a year delayed. We do know that we discovered an error, or I wouldn't say an error, but we discovered a weakness in our systems for graduation cohort tracking this year. And it did cause an error in our graduation rate. One thing in Northfield is our demographic cohorts are very small. So when you're talking about a Hispanic cohort of 35 students and you have an error for four of them, it can drastically change your graduation percentage. And that is, in fact, what happened. So we had some students who were actual late graduates that, that information did not make it back to the person who needs to report that to the state. We now have a new system set up, and we are tracking these students very closely. And I think one of the benefits that comes from discovering an error like this is that we are able to shore up our internal systems, and that, that is what we have done. And a lot of people worked on this to help figure out the best way to, to manage, really tracking a 9th grade cohort, because that is how your graduation cohort is determined, your incoming 9th grader. So over the course of four years, we need to track every single student that was in that 9th grade cohort, as well as students moving in. So you can see that there's a lot of room where things can happen if they're not tracked closely. So we feel comfortable with the system we have in place. Had we discovered those errors prior to the MDE deadline, our overall rate would have been 92% instead of 91. And then the Hispanic rate would have been 74.3% instead of 62.9. So you can see that just those four students in a cohort, in a, in a student group of that size made a big difference. So there you can see, while the overall rate for the district declined slightly, we did see significant drops in our FRP and Hispanic, in part due to the error. But the other reason why was last year was almost a perfect storm of a couple situations. Students who continue on in high school through special education programs actually count against us in our four-year graduation rate. And last year was a year we happened to have a lot of, a significant number of students who were continuing on, both in, in our student groups and in the, in the overall population. So that, that played a part in this. And then we also, in combination with that, actually had a number of students, a higher-than-normal number of students drop out. So the combination of those two, plus the error, really accounted for this, this drop. And there's Northfield High School's rate. State context for graduation rates.
Our goal for this one is quite simple. The class of 2017 graduation rate will meet or exceed 95%. And as Hope said, they've already graduated, but we will not get the State Department's interpretation of the data until February. So the new action steps for these last two goals include some of the same action steps from the previous goals, as well as some that are exclusive to the secondary level. And we also realize that the work being done in the elementary schools will directly impact these college and career and graduating from high school goals, too. Second step, again, the curriculum for social and emotional is in grades pre-K through 8. Ramp-up to readiness is being implemented in grades 6 through 12. Right now, it's in the middle school. And the high school is working on where to place it for next year. And the Peer Helper program is in place at the high school. The high school has also implemented two multi-tiered systems of support classes in math. This is new this year, to help students who may be struggling in math. And we've highlighted a lot of the work of professional learning communities, pre-K through 12, that have had a huge impact, especially on some of our wins in the middle school. And in February, the middle school and high school teachers will be doing some professional development and professional learning on implementing reading strategies in all the content areas. So we've gone a little bit over time, but I would like to thank everybody for listening and thank especially Northfield Promise and Northfield Forward for their work and their help and feedback on what we're doing. And thank you to the public for being here tonight, too.